I call to order this regular meeting of the common council for Tuesday, February 4th, 2014 at 7:00 p.m. By this meeting, those who came to the community and posted in public places, those who was also given news media requests to Milwaukee Journal/Center and mycommunitynow.com. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Alvin Person Morales?
Here.
Alvin Person Chisel?
Here.
Alvin Person Hollenbeck?
Here.
Alvin Person Liquid?
Here.
Alvin Person Parish. Senator, we can all please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Please be seated.
Before we get started tonight, let the record show that the chairman is ruling ordinances 2374.4 and 2400 from tonight's agenda. Those ordinances will be brought back two weeks from now. Public hearings and presentations, we have none. Public comment, is there anybody who wishes to speak on any items listed on the agenda?
Yes, just a question. On your ordinance, number one, a discussion necessary action about the parking on the Library Drive.
Yes, sir.
If those people are not disabled or in wheelchairs, why can't they walk? That's not that bad of a job to walk from the parking lot.
That item was discussed at the Traffic and Safety Commission. The request came from the librarian, Alvin Almenby Shavich, as a chairman.
We're getting on your side that goes towards capture cutting, maybe that most of you can't park. That driveway right where that rear door comes out, they're actually loading their books and everything right there. So the thing is, they wanted to place the park there. Now at nighttime when they go off there, the ladies had to walk all the way back to the back of the parking lot back there, run across the street back there. So they thought that was more of a dangerous situation. And so what they did, they gave them a little more protection, but they got home, still parked there in the inner of company. So the safety, traffic safety is also for safety.
Okay, thank you, Almen. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on any items listed on the agenda? Second call, anybody else who wishes to speak on any items listed on the agenda? Third final call, is there anybody who wishes to speak on any items listed on the agenda? Public comment is now closed. Consent to agenda items. Mr. Clerk?
Number one, minutes of special meeting of the common council held January 21st, 2014. Minutes of the Personnel Committee held January 21st, 2014. Minutes of the Finance Committee held January 21st, 2014. Amended minutes of the Traffic and Safety Commission held January 15th, 2014 as amended. Minutes of the Claims Committee held January 22nd, 2014. Six minutes of the Board of Public Works held December 2nd, 2013. Seven minutes of the Minnesota CPA held November 26th and January 7th. And number eight minutes of the Board of Health held July 23rd, 2013, September 24th, 2013, and October 22nd, 2013.
Motion to approve would be in order. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Alvin Person Chisel, seconded by Alvin Hollenbeck. Any discussion? Honorable call, please.
Rocking your votes. All voting in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
New business, none. No, old business, none.
Let the record show that Alvin Hollenbeck is in Houston South at 7:05 p.m. Business number one.
The discussion in this here action regarding minutes of the regular meeting of the common council held January 21st, 2014.
Motion to approve would be in order.
Ooh.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Alvin by Shavich, seconded by Alvin Liquid. Any discussion? Honorable call, please.
Rocking your votes. One, two, four, five, voting yes, three abstained. Thank you. Number two.
Let the record show that Alvin Hollenbeck is returned at 7:07 p.m.
Number two, discussion in this here action regarding mayor's appointment of Mark Otto and to a board review with a term expired on June 30th, 2016, and John?
Eric.
Eric, to Traffic and Safety Commission, to term to expire April 30th, 2015.
With these nominations, these persons shall constitute committee member nominations, and a motion to approve of the mayor's appointments would be in order.
So moved.
Moved by Alvin Hollenbeck, do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Seconded by Alvin by Shavich. Any discussion? Honorable call, please.
All voting in favor? Thank you. Motion carries five zero. Ordinance and some resolutions. Number one, discussion in this necessary action regarding ordinance number 2298.2 entitled, the ordinance for no parking next to the railroad tracks on Library Drive west of the library except for the three library employees parking spaces on the east side of the drive.
This ordinance was recommended from the Traffic and Safety Commission, and a motion to approve of ordinance 2298.2 would be in order.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Alvin by Shavich, seconded by Alvin Hollenbeck. Any discussion? Honorable call, please. All voting in favor?
Motion carries five zero.
Five zero.
Thank you.
Who's first and who's second?
Uh, Bart Shavich first, Hollenbeck second.
Number two removed?
Yep, two and three have been removed.
Okay, now we're going to get to the resolutions. Resolutions, number one, discussion in this here action regarding resolution number 6387.3 entitled, a resolution to designate city depositories pursuant to 62127, a Wisconsin statute.
This is some necessary housecleaning based on depositories brought forward by the Finance Director and City Clerk Treasurer. Motion to approve would be in order.
Also approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Alvin Liquid, seconded by Alvin Morales. Any discussion? Honorable call, please. All voting in favor?
Motion carries five zero. Number two, discussion in this area action regarding resolution number 6831 entitled, a resolution honoring Diane Cisak and Jean Fremont, City of St. Francis, 2013 Citizens of the Year.
Members of the council, help me out. We passed this one out in January. If there's a citizen of the year here, so please help me in by passing this resolution.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Alvin Person Chisel, seconded by Alvin Liquid. Any discussion? Honorable call, please.
All voting in favor? Thank you. Motion carries five zero. Number three, discussion in this area action regarding resolution 6832 entitled, a resolution to recognize 24 years of service, of dedicated service, to City of Cuddy Police Department Sergeant Michaels Carchese.
Yeah, reading into the record, the resolution honored the 24 years of service by Michael Carchese, whereas Sergeant Michael Carchese is retiring from the City of Cuddy Police Department on February 7th, 2014, after 24 years of service. And whereas Sergeant Michael J. Carchese began his employment with the City of Cuddy on February 2nd, 1990, working for the Cuddy Police Department as a patrol officer for brief time before being assigned as a school resource officer, after which he returned to patrol. And whereas Sergeant Michael Carchese was removed to the position of detective police by the City Cuddy Police and Fire Commission on August 28th, 2000, and to Sergeant of Police on January 5th, 2010. And whereas Sergeant Michael J. Carchese throughout his long career was involved in five homicide investigations, was resulted in arrests and successful prosecutions. He was also involved with robbery, burglary, and bank robbery investigations. And whereas Sergeant Michael J. Carchese has always presented himself well to the public, showing great respect to all, with firm testimonials attesting to his demeanor. And whereas Sergeant Michael Carchese plans to spend his retirement enjoying the company of his wife Shavich and his daughters Angela and Jenna, as well as keeping himself busy with property management. Now therefore, the mayor, the common council, the City of Cuddy, and all citizens of this community do hereby resolve to formally recognize the dedicated service of Sergeant Michael J. Carchese to the City of Cuddy and its citizens, and we offer him his best wishes of a happy and healthy retirement. Motion to approve of this resolution would be in order. Do I have a second? Moved by Alvin Hollenbeck, seconded by Alvin Liquid. Any discussion? Honorable call, please. All voting in favor?
Motion carries five zero. Okay, number four, discussion in this here action regarding resolution number 6833 entitled, a resolution recognizing Carl Hepp for seven years of service to the City of Cuddy Traffic and Safety Commission.
Whereas resolution 6833 recognizes Carl Hepp for seven years of service to the City of Cuddy Traffic and Safety Commission. Whereas Carl Hepp began his voluntary work with the City of Cuddy in 2007 as a member of the City of Cuddy Traffic and Safety Commission. And whereas Carl Hepp served for seven years on his mother, very vital, and employed in the board. And whereas Carl Hepp, on a professional and personal level, worked with the commission and the residents of the City of Cuddy to ensure continued safety. And whereas Carl Hepp gave timelessly of his time and talents to the Traffic and Safety Commission for all of the seven years for the benefit of the community. Now therefore, it will resolve with the mayor, common council, and the citizens of the City of Cuddy to formally recognize Carl Hepp for his years of dedicated service to the City of Cuddy and to the City of Cuddy Traffic and Safety Commission. A motion to approve of this resolution would be in order.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Alvin by Shavich, seconded by Alvin Liquid. Any discussion? Honorable call, please. All voting in favor?
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to the common council on any subject at this time? Please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Gerald Wingleski, 377 D.D., Starbuck Avenue. Reading through my recycling thing here that I didn't get in the mail, I had to get it from somebody else. It has in here that the city charges an annual fee for recycling cart, blah blah, and this fee is not only paid for pickup and processing of recyclable material and put in your cart, but it also pays for the cost of operating the city drop-off site and disposal of leaves and yard waste. Then if you turn the paper over here, they're still charging me $2 when I take the bushel of it down there. If that's paid for through that, why am I, why am I still paying $2 every time I go down there? Second of all, if, uh, for every bushel I have, or gallon container, whatever they call it, um, how come South Milwaukee charges you $2 for all day? St. Francis charges you nothing to take yard waste down there. What are we doing wrong here in the City of Cuddy?
Mr. Wingleski, this has been a viral item for the past several years ever since the dump fee was instituted. The Board of, or the Finance Committee, back a couple years ago, they requested that the mayor perform an audit of the dump fee, of which I presented last June to the common council. I'm presenting that audit of the dump fee to the Board of Public Works later here in 2014. I've also given the council my recommendations back in June, and will continue to bring further recommendations regarding how we can reduce or eliminate the dump fee. When the recycling grant was cut by the state of Wisconsin, they cut $60,000 away from the recycling funds that helped pay some of the cost of city recycling. Uh, the dump fee was instituted to supposedly make up that fee. They had estimated it would make up $60,000 the first year, it only made up 30. The second year, they estimated it would make up $40,000, it only made up 35. So as you can see, it didn't make up the revenue that was taken away from us in the state, from the state of Wisconsin. There's an additional problem. We used to get scrap steel from people who would come into the dump, to the tune of about $15,000 to $18,000 when it was a free dump. That number is now down to about $1,300 a year. Thus, additional revenue that has been taken out of the revenues stream to help pay the cost of running that transfer site. There is a cost of doing business. How South Milwaukee can get away with doing it for $2, you know, there are different rules that different communities have. Uh, St. Francis has a private waste hauler. That's why you can move different products away, you know, they run under different rules than the City of Cuddy. Twenty-seven years ago, we were ahead of the game, if you will, when it came to automated trucks in picking up garbage and recycling. In today's day and age, the cost of getting rid of so much of this stuff, yard clippings, for example, according to the Wisconsin State Department of National Resources Law, it is illegal to dump your grass clippings into your garage. Yet, we as a community are offering a place for those people, our residents, to bring that into and have to pay to have that product, which technically isn't a legal product. You're supposed to keep it on your yard, but yet as a service to our residents, we take that at the dump site. Do we charge for it? Yes, we do. South Milwaukee charge for it? Yes, they do. You know, again, uh, the fees are at the yard. I'm bringing the proposal back this year, 2014, to five ways to produce or eliminate it, or to make them a lot easier. That's up to the council. The mayor's job is to make suggestions. It's up to the council, the Board of Public Works, to either take those suggestions or let them lie.
All right, another thing is here, talks about the, did your spring cleanup in a, in the spring for two weeks of May? This is the only free pickup of the year. Now that means jumping that, because it said that we will continue the yard waste pickup in November. Is that going to be charged?
The, the yard waste that's picked up, that we pick up in the fall, the leaves and things like that, that's going to be no different. There are no changes to that.
Okay.
Okay? And the spring cleanup over five weeks, it used to be that, you know, we used to do it one automatic district at a time. They found that doing it over a two-week period, it's more efficient to do it that way. And it really wasn't over a five-week period, because even though it was an automatic district a week, they were only out there about two or three days during that extended five-week period. So, and Cuddy is unique that we offer a free spring cleanup. South Milwaukee, St. Francis, they don't do that. Okay? Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to the council on any subject at this time? Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Good evening. Suzanne McKinney, 6260 South Lake Drive, Parkin 717. And I'm not going away, you're going to see my face a lot. Two adjectives that describe me as a woman of purpose and a woman of passion. And tonight, I'm passionate about the heroin overdose in Cuddy and in southeast Wisconsin. Um, I'd like to pass this out. Um, do I give it to the attorney, or can I come to the?
You can come forward and pass it up.
I don't know if you have this. I'd like to read something from the Milwaukee Suburban Summit to bring heroin epidemic in focus. Laura Pulsiver vividly remembers the night her son Luke told her he used heroin. Pulsiver woke up at 3:00 a.m., March 12th, and realized her 19-year-old son hadn't returned home from visiting a friend. She texted him, minutes stretched by, she sent another text. Finally, she called him. "I did something really stupid." "So stupid," Luke said, and he was crying. He called her from Greenfield Municipal Center. When she picked him up, she saw bandages on his arm. "What is all of this?" She said. "I'm so sorry, Mom." It was heroin. It was the drug that could kill the Elm Grove team three months later. This month, heroin summits will be held at Waukesha and Ozaki Counties. Across the state, heroin and opiate abuse is plaguing communities of every size. Last year in Milwaukee County, there were more deaths tied to opiate overdoses than there were homicides. The State Department of Justice has its number-one concern for local law enforcement, and has rolled out a massive public awareness campaign called "The Fly Effect." A state committee recently sent three bills promoting, promoted by a lawmaker whose daughter is a heroin addict to the assembly. Our community leaders, leaders of our private sector organizations, they need to have a better understanding of what the problem really is, so they're prepared when it comes time for them to make decisions about resources. Galbrook leads the Sheriff's Office Drug Task Force, which investigated three fatal opiate overdoses in 2013, compared with one in 2012 and 2011. Gabbra attributes much of the coinciding boost in thefts and burglaries to people stealing to feed their addictions. We've seen more of that here in Cuddy too, as well. But he says law enforcement can attest, arrest its way out of the problem. You're not going to solve the crime problem by drug addicts if you don't stop the addiction, he said. Children somewhere between ages of five and 15 need to understand that heroin should never be an option, that because if they use, it will ruin them the rest of their lives. Not only is heroin cheap and highly addictive, it's often lethal. Waukesha County recorded 13 fatal heroin overdoses in 2012, compared with five in 2011, and two in 2010. Numbers for 2013 are not available. In Milwaukee County, the majority of fatal drug overdoses in 2013 were caused by opiates. And 48 of the 120 drug overdose deaths, about 27% were attributed to heroin. Those numbers are preliminary and will fluctuate because of some 2013 death investigations. Experts agree that rates of fatal overdoses would be higher if it were not for Narcon, which reverses the opiate overdoses. The Pulsivers were shocked that heroin was in their community and wanted others to know about it. After Luke's death, they reached out to Chris Gerthe, one of Luke's teachers at Brookville East High School, seeing how they could help the school create a program. The night he died, Luke argued with his parents and stormed upstairs. His dad, Lee, went to the home office in the basement. Laura stayed in the living room, where she saw a TV news story about a man charged in a heroin overdose death. She texted Luke and asked him if he knew the suspect. He didn't know. Luke came downstairs and the two reconciled. Luke went out with a friend about 11:30 that night. But about an hour and a half later, Laura saw the all-light switch on, Luke was home, she went to sleep. The next morning, June 11th, Laura walked into Luke's room to wake him. He was sitting cross-legged on a futon and slumped forward, as if he had just fallen asleep. He had died from injecting a lethal dose of heroin. That's not easy to hear, but I think it's important. I received a letter from our mayor. I'd like to respond to a couple things he wrote. Uh, one of the suggestions I had was meeting with hospital administrators. And the mayor wrote, "While I would be more than willing to meet with hospital administrators, the City of Cuddy does not control how they arrange provision for heroin detox and after care in their facility." My suggestion was meet with them and see if we could work with them when we do have these situations of people with overdose. I can presume to know, for us to tell them how they can get work. Uh, the next thing, "City of Cuddy does not have the resources to provide support programs, like a 12-step program." 12-step programs are free. And I believe there's even a 12-step program in Cuddy, but it has to be out there. People have to know about it. 12-step programs are free for the people that come, and we don't pay for it. Uh, "While there are other county and state resources available, our mayor says I'm not aware of any grants to start new programs to support such efforts." And our governor has a new domestic grant that we could look into and possibly use that money somehow. The Intergovernmental Cooperation Council, which consists of the group of chief elected officials in Milwaukee County, is well aware of the problems of heroin addiction. And I know they are, but what are they doing about it? This is where we can use the different resources. New Berlin uses the churches for counseling. You know, instead of embedding the wheel and see what other counties and cities are doing. Um, so that's basically my response. Kim sent me this, "Healthiest Cuddy Coalition First Quarter League Meeting." And she indicates here heroin opiate use, and then says that it's a rise in the five, a huge rise in the last five to seven years. It's linked to burglaries, deaths, and robberies. I know that, but what's been, that's, this is. What are we going to do about it? So, I'm here to say that I'm concerned, every one of you have an obligation to keep our people safe, and to look at some of these things that we can do. There's things that can be done, and it's not massive things. So, that's what I'm here about. And I will be here every month till I hear that something is being done. You can hire me. I'm an additions RN. You can hire me if you want. I'll get things done. Thank you.
Thank you. The City of Cuddy, the City of Cuddy Health Department may have limited resources when it comes to things like this. Two weeks ago, in this common council chamber, we sat and listened for over 50 minutes to a chronic nuisance hearing that was presented over this governing body. We listened to the story of a heroin addict who was at, where the Cuddy Police responded, she was throwing needles into the air, every day in the amount of a garbage can. She refused any programs, any treatments that were offered.
And if you know anything about addictions, you have to get to those people when they're not high.
Her parents have been trying for years.
And then you help the parents.
Again, how much time and resources can we invest in it as a community, as a city?
And how much money and time are our police officers using?
That's why we're here with the chronic nuisance hearing, because it was a public nuisance, and that property owner needed to be cited, and he was during that hearing.
But we need to get help for the people. Help for the families that are dealing with it, and help for the addicts.
May I, may I just speak for just a moment? I personally know a family that's struggling with this very, very well. I mean, they're one of the best friends of the family for many, many years. And to see the upheaval in their life, I know what a tragedy and what a horrendous problem this has. But I also know, knowing both the user and the family that wants nothing more to assist them, that no matter what they do to help them, no matter the treatments, the centers, the best money could buy, it's not going to help the situation until the user himself decides to get help. And it's an absolute shame, and as someone who wants to address this, probably more than anybody on the council, just because of the personal reflection that I have with this, I just don't see how the city can throw a bunch of money at this to help each individual user. I mean, it would be great to have some sort of programs that start early, so that they never begin using it. But it, it takes a personal responsibility at some point to, to do this. And, you know, if there's support groups and things, that would be great, and I would be happy to assist with that. But knowing the problem very, very well, knowing that they have all the resources at their fingertips, and they still couldn't control the tailspin and the damage that caused, I just don't see how a city of, you know, our size could, what more we could possibly do. And as, I mean, that's sad to me, and I'm willing to hear you all speak afterwards and give you my information, but to build, to do more than what we do, because there are problems out there, I just think that's going to be very, very difficult. So, as long as you know that the city is willing to, to help in some ways, and as you can see from the health department and other ways, there are certain channels that can be addressed, but we're not, not doing anything, ignoring it. Police chief is all over it, and he will consistently tell you that the whole big problem is the number-one issue that the police officers face in the city, so.
When there is a problem like this person, there's interventions that can be done. The hospitals can teach families how to do interventions to break their denial.
And, and they do. And, you know, I'm not sure of all the practices outside our facility, but I have no doubt that they have faced these issues in the past, and that they at least offer some sort of programs, or at least assistance to send them to other places that do. I mean, there's multiple ones throughout the, the city of Milwaukee that are already out there that, you know, have national support for people that are out there. And again, I would like no more than to see this problem fully addressed, but I think it's becoming an epidemic throughout all the communities. I just feel that to say that Cuddy is not doing anything at all is a little unfair.
I, I didn't say at all. Were any of those interventions that passed out looked into? Any of them? Mayor?
Alderman Liquid.
The Cunningham Police merely don't just pick up a heroin user or somebody who may have overdosed or is close to overdosing, give them a ticket and drop them off on their, on their merry way. The, the police actually counsel them. They want them to get help because they don't want a repeat customer, and they don't want that person to harm themselves, they don't want that person to die. So, they try to get them, you know, the user help. And like Alderman Morales said, you know, like either if they have to take them to detox and that, they try to counsel them. But you can only, you can only help the user so much. These interventions sound great, they said, but it is such an addictive drug. This isn't like they, they use marijuana occasionally when they watch football games and this is something where they'll turn their whole family away, where the family doesn't want anything to do with them. They'll, they'll do whatever, knowing that they could die after their next fix. And I've never, I've never met too many alcoholics or, or drug addicts, and even, who even acknowledge they have a problem. So you could do an intervention, but unless they're going to hurt themselves, or they're a danger to society, you perform the intervention, they're just going to say, "I don't have a problem, you're wasting your time. I'm fine, don't worry about it, Mom, don't worry about it, Auntie, don't worry about it, Dad. I'm on my way," and guess what? They go and they, they go and they find heroin and they get high.
It has to be a professional, professional intervention.
You, you can't, you can't make them, you can't make them be intervened. I mean, you can have a professional, if, if they do not want the help, they're not sitting there. You can't make them sit there. They leave it, they leave the detox facilities all the time.
Out their own free way.
I, I have a cousin who's on it. She, they leave. They think they need help, it sounds all great, and then they go, and then they, they sit there, and then finally it's like, "I either need a drink or I need a fix. I'm leaving now." You can't make me say it.
And those, there are legislative practices where if you're caught with heroin, you do have to abide by drug programs, counseling, regular drug tests. And again, those don't work. It, it takes personal responsibility and their own understanding that they have to either stop the problem themselves, or go down this destructive path. And again, I'm not saying that we should totally neglect the problem. This is obviously a very, very serious issue. I'm just saying that there is certainly, uh, things in place that are there to help right now. And if we could do more without, you know, sending every single Cunningham resident on a mandatory rehab, I mean, that's, it's impossible to do. And, you know, I appreciate your passion for it, because it is obviously a very concerning issue. Um, but we have to be realistic, I believe, that there is personal responsibility and accountability for it.
And there are some programs that are more successful than others, and I suggest that you contact New Berlin's Police Department and find out how they're working with the community. They're working with Teen Challenge, which is very successful in this, probably more successful than any other group. Um, were any of those suggestions done, Mayor, that I passed out?
Like I said, ma'am, we only have so many resources. The summons that were held in the other two counties were organized by county agencies that have larger staffs than the City of Cunningham Health Department. We have a minimal staffing.
That list I passed out, were any of those done here in Cunningham?
We've talked about some of those, ma'am, and some of those things are things that we can control, but others are not. The grant that you speak about is not available for that, so that it, it, you can't get funding for that. Under a hundred grand position. Like I said, the Intergovernmental Cooperation Council has talked about the heroin problems, not only in this community, but throughout the entire state of Wisconsin and the issues that are there. As Alderman Morales said, the police departments and the police chiefs and the neighborhood departments, they meet on a regular basis and talk about some of the problems that are out there, what can be done for some of these people. But the point is that, I mean, we only have so many resources here in the city. We have a very small health department, and as you've seen in other communities, that these efforts have been, have done on the county and on the state level. If they're willing to bring resources to Milwaukee County, our, you know, my office, the common council, the health department, would support those initiatives. But to run something like those counties are doing, we just don't have the resources for that, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I mean, a 12-step program, it's free. Do we have one in town?
Where, where do we get the staff to do it? Where do we...
You don't use the staff.
But why should that be Cunningham government creating a program?
No, ma'am, you can find out where it is, just have the information so you can give it to somebody.
No, if there's information that's available, we will be happy to make it available.
Why don't you know about it?
Because nobody's making it available, so we do know about it, ma'am. You know, one of the problems is tonight, do you see any reporters or television cameras in the room here? Not a single one, do you? Because they don't cover common councils anymore, do they? The media picks and chooses what they want to cover. Picks and chooses what kind of information they want to put out there. It's reliant upon government, i.e. local government, common government, state government, to do their own publicity, if you will, because we are the media, through the use of websites, social media, to get information out there. If there's information that's, needs to be made available to the public on different programs here in our community, we're more than happy to do that. We have a very active neighborhood block watch here in town. They've been in existence 10 and a half years. We have their pamphlets right out here in City Hall. Different programs through Bunch Concern Interface that help the elderly and the needy here in our community. The food pantry, the, and the clothing and the other fine work that they do there. We put their pamphlets and their information right out here for the residents at City Hall. We put it on our website when they have events that are out there, to make our citizens aware of it. We try to do our job. If some, if we're made aware of something, we will help promote it for the good of the community.
I expect you to do some investigating.
Anybody else wish to speak to the council on any subject at this time? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Do I have a second? Moved by Alderman Body Shevich, seconded by Alderman Liquid, any discussion? If you heard the motion, all those in favor, the motion, say the bottom of your eye. Opposed. The ayes have it, so we adjourn. Thank you.